Call the meeting to order was that I pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Here.
Rosack?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Marilyn Sper.
We may have a change to be agenda, and that's what we're waiting for the attorney to look up. In the meantime, we'll move to public comment. Anyone would like to address the council, please step to the podium, state your name, and give us your statement, and remember that we have a three-minute time. Anybody want to address the council?
I would.
Senator Ban, and I'm here to talk a little bit about Heritage Park, which is on the agenda also. But I would like to see the electrical upgraded and on file, like blueprints of new service to the park, and if that could be in, like, the budget. I know budget's coming, and it's kind of too late for any upgrades this year, but maybe put that in the budget. Removing the bushes to improve visibility, security, and optimize the sitting wall that's there. That would give people the option to have, like, spacing the murals or facing the street. Flipping the bench on Main to face the park and the murals. That's the bench across from Dr. Trapez's. That back wall going to the north on the mural side, people said, "Why didn't they paint that?" And then I've looked back at old pictures, and those benches that are in front of that back sitting wall have been there, but it would be, I think, more convenient to move them, so they aren't blocking that sitting wall. And City Park, I know we have the old wood picnic tables, but if we could drill holes in the top and people could bring their own beach umbrellas, especially around the splash pad. And bathrooms by the splash pad, because I actually see parents letting kids go behind trees. And then that's about all I have.
Let's take a name, please.
Aaron Scudder. My main concern is the motion for Cora's. Worried about the new trail that is in direct proximity. The trail, I believe, was put in to bring tourists and money for a peaceful trail in a park designed specifically for children. Seeing the setup of the park, it's younger children, so if there's a heavier traffic flow of semi-trailers, probably going to deter individuals from using the park, especially the families like myself with younger children, which seems, like I said, the way it's been set up for. Directly located near one of the areas of out-of-town traffic, whether it's for school functions, fireworks, it just doesn't really portray what I see in here, Streeter is trying to grow into. I mean, that's one of our highest areas of out-of-town traffic. We do have two scrap yards already located in town, not that they don't bring jobs. I don't know how many they actually do, but I just worry about another ISO in town. I've seen the other scrap yards, and those are my main concerns with that.
Hi, I'm Tony Pettit, I live at 206 LaSalle Street in Streeter. There's a couple of things I'd like to talk to council about. The first one is adding Heritage Park to the list of parks that allow people to consume beer and wine. And secondly, creating or modifying the existing ordinance to allow for ticketed events that include beer and wine sales in the City Park. I'm a co-organizer of Jammin' at the Clock, and it's in its fourth year at Heritage Park. We've evolved into a Ravinia-type event on Main Street. People bring tables, they bring food and beverages to enjoy while they listen to the music. They bring their families, they relax at the end of the work week, with a nice sense of community in our beautiful Heritage Park. We have a mature, responsible audience of about 130 to 150 people in attendance every week. We're asking that people be allowed to drink beer and wine under the stipulations of the existing ordinance along with Marilla, City Park, and Anderson Field. We don't have any desire to sell it, we don't want to provide it. We just want people to be able to bring a bottle of wine, sit down and have it with their cheese and their crackers or their salami, whatever food products they bring, or walk over to Monroe's Half, buy a beer, come back to their lunch here in the City Park, and continue to enjoy the music. Some people have asked why they don't just go to City Park instead, and there's several reasons, and I've included them in a handout for you in respect to the timeline here. The other question I have is if the city would consider drafting or rewriting the ordinance for a City Park to allow special paid for and ticketed events that allow the sale of beer and wine, sponsored specifically by non-for-profit organizations in Streeter and City Park. A segment of the park near the Plum Pavilion could be partitioned off for these special events. The remainder of the park would still be accessible to the general public. And the events we are talking about are Class X. For example, we could do brunch at the band show. We could feature an 11-piece big band playing Tommy Joy's and Glenn Miller, while the ticket buyers enjoy a brunch buffet under canopies or -- that's a great idea. -- umbrellas at picnic tables while they sip on their mimosa or wine spritzer. And the Lane could do an outdoor performance one evening during their entire season, all with a paid ticket in a semi-private area. Many of our neighboring communities, Ottawa, LaSalle, and our sales, have events where alcohol is included for purchase at these events, but no other nearby community has anything like our Plum Pavilion. These changes in events, I think, would help define Streeter as a leader in unique entertainment and good use of the City Park and the Pavilion. In regard to Jammin' at the Clock, have any of you been there this year? If not, I invite you all to attend one of our Friday night events. Take a look at our audience, and then form an opinion and a response to our requests. I believe most of our citizens can and do behave as responsible, mature adults. If I don't believe that, then the Bahrain setting to measure the standards of our citizens is way too low.
Do you want these? This one needs extra copies, because I only have two, but there are five of these, one for each of the council members as well as Mr. Palmer. Thank you.
And we'll move to the agenda items.
Did we do approval to the agenda yet? Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, did we do approval or the agenda? Oh, okay.
And so there's no changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, there's no changes to the agenda.
Make that part of the record, sir. I've entertained a motion to adopt an ordinance to termination of the Streeter Tax Ancrement Finance District Number One Development Project Area Plan Projects. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, this is the first tip that we had, right, and that was primarily for the Bill Walsh operations, I think, and so now the entire taxes now will go back on the rolls, right, for distribution? Is there a correct? Is there any other discussion? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Sper.
Aye. I've entertained a motion to authorize the city manager to proceed with an award of a bid to Robert Shady Land Improvement, Pontiac, Illinois, for demolition of property Z. Is that 512, right?
Mm-hmm.
I got an extra number online. 512 Spring Street, 211 Frick Street, 309 North Vermillion Street, 614 South Vermillion Street, and 112 -- okay, 1121, I'm sorry. 1121 and 1121 and a half, Otter Creek Road. And I have a motion to -- and a motion by Brian, secondly, Joe. Is there any other discussion? Does anybody you'd like to add, Jerry?
No, basically, we had three voters, Robert Shady from Pontiac, who the city's worked with before, was a little bitter, so we've had the asbestos forests come back. Three of these had some minor asbestos, and would deal with that at a demolition, but otherwise recommend approval.
Any other questions from council members? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Sper.
I've entertained a motion to receive and place on file the Planning Commission's recommendations, 219-08, recommending approval issuance of a special use permit to Cora's Trailers Manufacturing, Inc., allowing a recycling collection slash processing center at property zone M1 Light Manufacturing Zoning District at property commonly known as 410 West Broadway Street.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think that if we're going to look at this, that we should do it in accounting before we approve any of this. I mean, there is a lot of concern with traffic with the high school in that area, and this gentleman here is right with the park there, you know, being right there with little kids, and, you know, I can see a major increase in traffic.
The permit did go through the Planning Commission, and any opposition to it or any concerns at that time should have been raised at the Planning Commission, not necessarily here at the council, other than what was made here tonight is to open forum, make your comments, it's fine, but if it's something like that, it should have been at that point in time. And the Planning Commission has recommended approval of it, and so this particular item here, then, is just to make a, to receive and place on file their recommendation.
Right, it's not an action on the permit itself, it's just to place the recommendation on file.
Any other comments, questions? Clerk, call roll please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch? Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Sper.
Aye. Now, item four. Entertained a motion to adopt an ordinance to approve and issue a special use permit to Cora's Trailer Manufacturing, Inc., petitioned to allow for a recycling collection processing center in an M1 Light Manufacturing Zoning District at property commonly known as 410 West Broadway Street.
You have a motion, please. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll make a second so we can discuss the item.
Okay. Now, we'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah, like I say, again, there's just a lot of traffic. Going to be increased traffic with high school and sports with the high school going on, noise factors in the park down there, I just, I don't think it's a good idea.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, there's, I don't know, there seems to be some discord on the whole issue, and I wish we had more time to talk about it, actually.
Yeah, I've been looking at this all, kind of all weekend, and going back and forth on the topic, just, you know, making sure this is, we hit the, these are the 13 items on our, on our list. Are they all compliant? So I've been, I've been sitting on the fence, I'll say that for a couple of weeks.
Jeremy, any comments? I mean, it went to the Planning Commission, they went through 13 points, and they found...
Yeah, so, yeah, the Planning Commission met last Tuesday, and they went through the required 13 findings, made sure that they read them all off, and...
And there was a public hearing.
And there was a public hearing, we had to get a load of residents to speak. Traffic, you know, is an issue, it is something, the Planning Commission did not break forth, but the code does allow that you request a traffic study. But generally, that happens at the Planning Commission level, but it didn't, but it is something that can be asked.
Was there any opposition voiced at the Planning Commission against this granting this permit?
I believe there were three residents that spoke, basically just questioning if they were going to be adding additional square footage, which they stated they were not. The building would all be inside the existing building. They asked if the material would be stored outside, they said, "No, it would be an inside operation." Those were basically the questions asked.
So nobody actually voiced opposition to granting the permit?
I think the biggest, well, the biggest concern is the location. I've had some, you know, I understand the free enterprise part of it, but you also have to understand the high schools, tennis courts, football field, the amount of traffic, the usage of the place, the noise, the neighborhood, and I just think it's a bad location myself, and I've had nothing but opposition, so...
I mean, it is zoned, you know, light industrial, and when Dependable had it operating going 24/7, it was much noisier than it is now, I mean, from that standpoint, and the high school still was there, the tennis courts and everything else, so I don't know what else has changed over that timeframe. And since they met all 13 points that our Planning Commission reviewed, I don't know whether legally that we could voice opposition to granting it.
The trail and the park are two major changes from when, from now to then...
That's right, yes, they are, yeah.
Well, I think the council has three options, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
They could vote to deny the special use permit. They could vote to send it back to the Planning Commission for further review and provide instruction to the Planning Commission of the areas they particularly have concerns about. The evidence is supposed to be presented to the Planning Commission, and the council makes its decision on evidence in the record, and if the council feels there's not sufficient evidence in the record, it would be appropriate to send it back to the Planning Commission. The third option would be to approve it, but given that it is a special use permit, the council could put stipulations on the permit itself, and I believe we've done it in other situations. So for example, perhaps fencing or creating a buffer zone might be stipulations the council would like to consider. But those are the three options I see.
But those are the recommendations we could make back to the planning council.
Right, to refer back for their further review and considering these particular issues.
I think with the conditions, the way they are, that we need to send it back with the recommendation. What questions you may have on this ordinance? We need to do that now, give them what we want to tell them, or...
I think you should, so first, procedurally, I think what would happen, what we need to do is to table the motion that's currently pending, and then make a motion to refer back to the Planning Commission once that motion is seconded, have discussion on the factors that you're asking the Planning Commission to provide further information to the council.
Okay. We have a motion to second on granting the permit, but we need to have those...
Like I said, you would do a motion to table that motion.
Can I hear it?
No.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Clerk, call roll.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough? Marilyn Sper.
Aye. Now, that's to table...
Consideration of the ordinance of the permit itself, yes. So now there would be a motion to refer back to the Planning Commission.
And a motion to... Motion to...
Sure, yes.
Motion, Mr. Rosack?
I'll second.
Okay. Now, any other discussion? Or any issues that we want, or any directions that we want to give the Planning Commission direction to take into consideration for additional study on this issue?
The only one I have right now is number eight, and it's the design considered relationship to surrounding areas, visual impacts and proposed use of this property and the aging property. No screening is necessary, but I think all scrap yards of any kind should be screened, as we, one that came in since, in the last few years, it was required to do that, and this one would have to be screened also, I think, the fence area from tennis courts and from Broadway Street.
All right, just, it didn't say that no screening was required, it basically said that the existing, like, the tree lines and fences met the requirements for screening. If you'd like additional screening, that's okay.
On Broadway, mainly where it's open, I know they say everything is going to be inside, but it's hard to determine.
What it said, though, that there may, you know, did it take into consideration that trail connect that wasn't there before? I mean, so is there adequate screening there now, or does it need to be more?
The existing trees meet the definition of a type A screen in our code, but it's a special use, like Cheryl said, you could add whatever stipulations you would like.
We'd have to look at, I mean, actually go down there and take a look at how much screening is actually there, or they could.
The entire property is surrounded by traffic.
I mean, that's something that has to be done.
Any other suggestions or comments you want to the Planning Commission?
Just to make sure we covered all this, just, council, take a look at factor number one and factor number 11.
So we're asking the Planning Commission to pay special attention to it.
Well, that's up to the council to decide, I'm just suggesting that those might be wanted.
Number one and number 11.
Yeah, the one that deals with vehicular...
Put it over.
Yeah, one of the...
You're dealing with a little limit.
Yeah, yeah. And I also then would encourage you, everybody has a concern now that you attend the Planning Commission and voice those concerns there at that point in time, so there may, if there's other issues that needs to be discussed, well, that's the place for it to be discussed, because we are charged with taking action on their recommendations, so it's going to come with a recommendation, additional stipulations, or yes or no, and that's what they're going to send to us.
Don't we already have that?
Pardon?
Don't we already have the recommendation from the zoning?
Except the council is asking additional questions about it, only because there's questions being raised now that was not raised at the Planning Commission.
They did ask about traffic, and right now you do roughly one trailer a day, so you got a couple trucks going up and down. If you're going to be running from 8:00 to 5:00, will you haul a 40,000-pound truck out of there once a week, doubtful, so your traffic will actually be decreased.
No, that's the type of information that you need to share with the Planning Commission.
We actually did.
So, just think that they need to look at.
Okay, any other suggestions or comments?
Clerk, call roll, and a motion. Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Sper?
I've entertained a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Title 10 of the Streeting and National Code concerning Vehicles and Traffic 10, add Chapter 10.30 regulating block parties. A motion, please. Is there a second?
No.
Any discussions? Dave, you want to make comments on this?
Well, as I mentioned during the whole meeting, this is an ordinance that will permit minor resident, people living on minor residential streets to request from the city a permit to hold up, conduct a block party at your expense. As part of the arrangements, we will provide barricades that the residents will then place out at either end of the block during the event, at the 10, those are the time limits, and we will be permitting the consumption of alcohol, not the sale of alcohol, but just the consumption of alcohol within the public right of way, that would otherwise not be permitted under our ordinance. The tickets, charges can't be, it has to be open to everyone on the block. A petition has to be completed among the block, people living on the block, obtaining 51% of homeowners consent. So it's, it's a program that I think we've had block parties from time to time, but we didn't have the structure, and this ordinance was really based on one particular suburban ordinance, but I've also studied probably a dozen others, and it's the best pieces, and then added a couple of things that's for Streeter that I thought were appropriate for us.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, call roll, please.
Pete Dye?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Sper?
Aye. Item six. I've entertained a motion to receive and place on file the Streeter Parks and Open Spaces Board's recommendation to use low road number two and replace Twister Hill with Twister Hill Park, and also add the date established.
A motion, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion or comments?
No, this is for the sign only. The frame, I did reuse the old prism.
Have a motion, please.
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or comments?
No, this is for the sign only.
The frame, I did reuse the old tourism frame for the same size sign, so we don't have to bother, it's at the armory right now.
Who made that motion? Pardon? Who made the motion?
I did.
That Brian, I thought it was.
Streeter?
Bedai?
Aye.
Brozak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Ansford?
Aye.
Item seven. I've entertained a motion to place on file and approve the Streeter Parks and Open Spaces Boards' recommendations for improvements to Heritage Park.
No move.
Second. Any other discussions?
This is just a motion to place on a file, doing nothing.
Unfined. Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Brozak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Ansford?
Aye.
Now, I'd just like to add to that, thanks to the Streeter Parks and Open Spaces Board for the recommendations, and since some of these recommendations are operational issues and not needing council approval, I'm going to suggest that we have a more detailed council of the whole of this entire area. If you guys are in agreement with that, then we'll next one of the council hold these, that'll be an agenda item. Richard, can send the agenda. And then again, a motion to approve these, consent agenda with an amended fund warrant total, it looks like eight hundred and forty-two thousand and forty-four dollars.
Two.
Is there a second? Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Brozak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Ansford?
Aye.
City Council, any other questions? Anybody have?
No, other than I found out today that there was a grant from the federal government, Chair.
I received a grant from the Federal Home Loan Bank and it's not expired.
It hasn't expired, I've had a couple people ask me, and it was to improve the value of your home, and we set it up in the middle of town, but just wanted to get out there, maybe a picture or something that is expired.
There's two events coming up soon, Cruise Night, a very important event, you know, this is a lot of fun, but it also produces a lot of tax revenue for the city. The more people come into town for these events, less taxes we pay ourselves, essentially, they replace what we have to do. There's also a golf, disc golf tournament coming up in October, it'll be the first one, it's an event sponsored by Northern Illinois area. It's a state tournament, and it'll be like a hundred professional and amateur disc golf people at Merle Park for the day. And that'll also be another important one, they come, they'll stay here and eat and drink and buy gas hopefully. So it'll be, it'll be interesting, there'll be a lot more information coming out on both those very soon.
Okay, thank you. The, the item that we tabled last month, since we couldn't resurrect it tonight on the agenda, so we'll have to have a special council meeting sometime, maybe next week if we can get together and take action on that. Brian said he's probably only going to be here Monday and Tuesday and next week.
Sunday.
Tuesday, Wednesday? Okay, so, is there a time that fits him, that everybody's got more or none?
Morning.
Tuesday, you're open Tuesday?
Morning.
Morning, Tuesday morning?
Should be good.
Whatever time you want to have it. Six thirty-six?
I'll be up at six. I'm up at six if you want to.
I mean, I'm there, I mean, there, I mean, to get everybody there.
Well, some people have jobs, maybe eight o'clock or something, and they can be off here.
Was eight work?
Yep.
Eight on Tuesday, next week?
What time?
Eight AM.
So we'll have to get that notice out, we need a forty-eight hour notice.
Tomorrow, I'll have to get it out, we can buy it by our own location. Who is the biggest? Otherwise, you'll have to appoint another, which I think you have reported to do.
I'd also like you to just keep in mind, you know, we're going to need to have a strategic planning session, I think, some type pretty quickly. And, you know, as we're getting ready to head into the budget season, nice to have that done prior to that, so. Nothing else? Motion to adjourn.
Two.
Second. Motion by Joe, second by Brian. Clerk Colerole, please.
Bedai?
Aye.
Brozak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marilyn Ansford?
Aye.